The November tenth, two thousand and twenty city council work session. And we'll do a roll call. So Claudia, if you could do that.
Counselor Drabkin?
Here.
Counselor Garvin?
Here.
Counselor Geary?
Great evening.
Counselor Stassen?
I'm here.
Counselor Peralta? Doesn't look like we have him yet. Council President Minky?
Here.
And Mayor Hill?
And I'm here. So welcome everyone. This evening, the first hour and a half, we're going to be receiving a update on our urban growth boundary. Our remand update from our, our planning director Heather Richards. And so Heather will turn it over to you. Again, I note that there's numerous individuals from your department on the line. Spencer, we see representing us legally, Amanda also, but Spencer specifically and DJ. So welcome everyone and we'll get started.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. So tonight, we do have a lot of information to bring to you. And I know it's been, every work session's been a little bit dense. And Freudian's on the dense, I guess, but tonight, what we want to do is go into some detail with you prior to the public hearing. So that you, when you get your documents can be more familiar with them. We do plan on delivering the documents to you next week in binders. And we sent you a link to all the documents that are currently on our website. That's been up since October twenty seventh for both you and the public to see. So DJ and I are going to do what we've done in the past, which is we're going to sort of tag team this as we go forward and work from a PowerPoint. I'm going to share my screen with you. Okay, sorry about that. My screen always goes blank for a couple of minutes before it shares. So it's, it always makes me a little nervous, but we are talking about our UGB remand. Tonight, what we want to go through is do a legal and technical overview with you. So we're going to start talking a little bit about the findings and the process that we took legally. We're going to share with you the map and how we got to our map recommendation. We're going to share with you the study areas that we looked at specifically and the screening criteria associated with them and the ones that were recommending for inclusion in this UGB land expansion and the ones that were not and the reasons why. And then the plan itself actually is much more in depth than just the alternatives analysis. We've been focused on that because that's what the court remand was to us. But we want to go through everything else with you tonight as well, which is the plan itself. And then it's, it's appendices and there are six appendices that, to the plan that are also important. And then what the adoption process and the calendar is for this effort. So you're going to see an ordinance at your meeting on December first, a public hearing, ordinance number five zero nine eight. And what that ordinance is going to do, it's going to amend the McMinnville Comprehensive Plan. So it's going to amend it in three ways. It's going to adopt the McMinnville Growth and Urbanization, Growth Management and Urbanization Plan. It's going to add land to the urban growth boundary. And it's going to assign comprehensive debt, plan designations to that urban growth boundary land. The plan itself, which we either will call MGMUP or the plan, is the plan that was originally put together and adopted in two thousand and three by ordinance four seven nine six. And it's really the foundation of this work. And then there are six appendices to them. The original submittal had, oh, there's seven appendices. I'm sorry. The original submittal had six and we have added one as part of our implementation methodology. So appendix A is the population and employment forecast. Appendix B is the buildable lands analysis. That's where you'll find the information for land need and type of land need. Appendix C is the urbanization report or the, or the alternatives analysis. And this is the court remand work. This is the biggest appendix that we have. Appendix D is our recommended comprehensive plan policy amendments. Appendix E is our zoning ordinance amendments. And then appendix F is the comprehensive plan map amendments. And appendix G is about framework plans and area plans. So the UGB amendment that we're bringing to you as a recommendation is what you see on the screen here. It's a total of six hundred and sixty-two point four zero gross buildable acres. So you will hear us talk about gross buildable acres and gross acres. And I shared this with you in a previous work session, but it's good to always point it out. Typically, when we talk about UGBs, we talk about gross buildable acres because that's how we accommodate the land need to serve our future population growth. But really, there's overall acreage that we would be bringing into the UGB as part of our comp plan map amendment. And that's gross acres. And the difference there is what's considered unbuildable. So in this regard, our, our UGB amendment recommendation is eight hundred and sixty-two point four gross acres and six hundred and sixty-two point four gross buildable acres. It is a phase two piece of the MGMUP because originally, phase one has already been brought into the UGB. And we're going to make a recommendation that all the land, both phase one and phase two, have comprehensive plan map amendments with new comprehensive plan designations. And so for the ordinance that you would be considering, we would be looking at one thousand two hundred and eighty point three gross acres in terms of comprehensive plan map amendment. And that's phase one and phase two and nine hundred and twenty-one gross buildable acres. This is to serve a few, future population of forty-four thousand fifty-five people. There's some, some people are getting tripped up on this when we're out talking about this in the public. This is our targeted population that we're planning for. It's approximately the, the land, the total land that we're talking about in terms of phase one, phase two, UGB amendment is meant to serve about twenty-five hundred new dwelling units. The plan itself talks about six thousand, but thirty-five hundred of those were intended to be absorbed in the existing UGB. And they have and still are being absorbed in the existing UGB. It also includes two hundred and fifty-four acres of park land, a hundred and six acres of employment land, and a hundred and twenty-one acres of other public and semi-public uses, which are schools and churches and public facilities and things like that. So the plan itself, we are working from a, since it is a remand, we're working from a data set that was established in two thousand and one. That was the basis for this two thousand and three McMinnville Growth Management and Urbanization Plan. And it's based on the population forecast, housing needs analysis and economic opportunity analysis that was established then and, and adopted and affirmed by the state. So we are, we are working towards a targeted population of forty-four thousand fifty-five people. That was based on when we first put this together, we had twenty-eight thousand five hundred people in the city. And so we were looking at an increase in population of about fifteen thousand five hundred people. To accommodate those fifteen thousand five hundred people, we needed six thousand new dwelling units. And again, like I shared with you, some of those were intended to be within the existing UGB. The housing supply target is sixty percent single family and forty percent multifamily. Now, as well as then, we were hovering around somewhere a little north of sixty-five percent single family and thirty-four percent multifamily. So it's moving towards more density. There's a housing density target of five point seven dwelling use per gross buildable residential acre. And that's important in McMinnville because we really work from a policy of integrating different types of density and housing products and neighborhoods with plan developments. So we're looking at an overall gross, gross dwelling unit per acre in terms of our target. And you find all this information in appendix A and appendix B of the plan. So just wanted to point out to people that the increase in the population, nine thousand people were meant to be absorbed within the existing UGB. And then the UGB amendment, both phase one and phase two, was meant to absorb six thousand five hundred people. And then in terms of dwelling units, thirty-five hundred dwelling units are, were meant to be absorbed within the existing UGB with density and development. And then the UGB amendment, both phase one and phase two, is meant to accommodate twenty-five hundred housing units. So the McMinnville Growth Management Urbanization Plan, it started in nineteen ninety-four. This is a periodic review work task. So we're still in periodic review, which is important because we fall under a different statutory requirement in terms of how we process this UGB amendment. There was a community visioning effort that occurred between nineteen ninety-five and nineteen ninety-six called McMinnville twenty twenty. It was led by Walt Gal and they called themselves Task Force Two Thousand. And then in two thousand and one and two thousand and two, the city went back into the community and did community forums to sort of test McMinnville twenty twenty and, and refined it a bit. But coming out of that process, that community process was seven guiding principles of growth planning. And that's what's guiding this plan and what you see tonight as well. So the first one is compliance with state planning requirements. The second one is to respect the existing land use and development patterns and build from them. So neighborhoods that have developed a historic scale and character should be preserved. The third one is to avoid development in areas of known hazards or natural resources. The fourth one is to consider the availability and cost of providing urban service to new development based on physical and topographic boundaries. The fifth one is density. Adopt policies that allow the market to increase densities and push it to do so in some instances. The sixth one is traditional development. Allow and encourage development that meets the principles of smart growth, which if you think about it back in the late nineteen nineties, that's a pretty progressive stance because the MGMUP is really based on a twenty-minute walkable neighborhood, which is something that we all plan for today, but not, communities weren't necessarily doing then. And then in terms of UGB expansions, contain the urban expansion within natural and physical boundaries to the extent possible. So the city established a need for one thousand one hundred and twenty-five buildable acres in two thousand and three and submitted a UGB amendment for eight hundred and eighty-one buildable acres to the state. That had a fifteen hundred gross acres in it. From that process, only two hundred and seventeen acres of rural residential land and forty-two acres of school land was allowed to come into the UGB. So what that meant was we, we had brought in two hundred and fifty-nine acres into the UGB in what we're calling phase one. That's in two thousand and four, but we still had outstanding land need for housing, employment and livability for that population of forty-four thousand fifty-five people. So from there, we had a pretty long and windy, windy road. We submitted a new plan in two thousand and five for phase two of the UGB to meet that need. The DLCD director approved it. It got appealed to LCDC. LCDC approved it. And then it got appealed to the Court of Appeals. We went through a variety of back and forth, back and forth with the petitioners that appealed it. And eventually, the Court of Appeals made a decision in two thousand and eleven, remanded it back to LCDC, who remanded it back to us in two thousand and thirteen. And at that time, we elected to walk away for a while and take a breather on the project due to depleted resources, finances and staff time and also battle fatigue. But as you know, in January, you asked us to pick up this remand and see if we can work on it and bring it to closure and build on the investment that occurred in this community in the past for this growth plan and then also to prepare for a legislative fix at the same time if we weren't able to be successful this way. So that's what we're doing. We're responding to the remand from two thousand and thirteen. We are in a planning horizon of two thousand and three to twenty twenty-three. And we're using the data set from that time period that was generated by the legal record for this submittal. So how and why did we end up with the boundary that we're recommending to you? It is really through a process of following the Court of Appeals roadmap for this UGB analysis. And if you ask most planners in the state of Oregon, the decision for McMinnville in terms of the roadmap of how to navigate the alternatives analysis is very confusing. It's not traditional and I don't think outside of Bend, who used it, any other community has used that as a roadmap. And shortly thereafter, the state went through rulemaking to clarify some of the things that came out of this. But we're still using it. It's the direction given to us. And so we really sat down and tried to figure out what does this mean and how do we put this together? So step one is to determine the land need. And then step two has a two-part process and it's all about adequacy. So it's how adequate is the land, the candidate land that we're looking at? How adequate is it to meet the land need of the city? So we have to determine the adequacy in two steps. One, we determine it based on ORS one nine seven point two nine eight one. And then if it meets that test, we then put it through a second test, which is ORS one nine seven point two nine eight three. And if it makes it through those two tests, it goes to step three, which is to determine if it's suitable as candidate land to meet the city's needs. And we use the goal fourteen and the locational factors in goal fourteen, of which there are five. So in terms of the step two piece of it, and this is where the remand is in terms of our assignment of error, is we were told, we really need to, one, prioritize the land in terms of how we look at it. We have to look, we establish our need and we have to determine if we can meet all that need in our exception lands first, based on whether or not those lands are considered adequate and suitable. And then we go to the next set of lands, which is class four soils and then class three soils, class two and class one. When we're determining whether it's adequate or not, and this is where it's, this court decision is a little bit different than what has to, had been traditionally done in the state, is we're determining it by goal two, part two, and then also by goal fourteen, factor five and seven. And both of those are essentially the same. And what it means is, what are the consequences of this land if we urbanize it in terms of consequences to energy and environment and livability? And then what's the compatibility of this land in terms of the adjacent lands, especially farmland? So in the case of the city of McMinnville, we decided after putting together a methodology for, for determining adequacy, that any lands that scored one point five or less in our scoring criteria were not considered adequate. So they would not make it past this step of screening. And DJ is going to walk you through what those screening criteria are. If it does make it past that first step, we then go into step, the second part of step two, which is looking at ORS one nine seven point two nine eight three. And there's three tests in this, in this section. One is that specific types of identified land needs cannot be reasonably accommodated on higher priority land. So what that means is if we couldn't accommodate all of our determined land need on the exception lands that were determined adequate and suitable, then we can go to the next priority of land classification. The second test is future urban services cannot reasonably be provided to the higher priority lands due to topographical or other physical strength constraints. So the original UGB submittal really focused a lot on costs of services and costs of services being traditional services. So water, wastewater, transportation. But what the court decision said was services are not what we would consider infrastructure services. It's really services that are defined in goal eleven. And goal eleven talks about public safety response. It talks about connectivity to the rest of the community, things like that. So we had to look at services from a totally different lens. And if we found that it wasn't adequate, the land couldn't meet that test, then it would be screened out as inadequate at this point. The third test is maximum efficiency of land uses with a proposed urban growth boundary requires inclusion of lower priority lands in order to include or to provide services to higher priority lands. So what this means is if we find land in the exception area or in a lower class soil class, but that we feel is adequate and suitable, but it can only come into the UGB if we bring in land adjacent to it that's a higher, that's a higher class of soil. So class three and we bring in class two to serve it, then we need to consider the class two soils to do that because we really want to get those class three soils in. And you'll find that that did occur in this process with the city of McMinnville. So with this third step, if we make it through those first two steps of adequacy is to determine which land should be included under goal fourteen, and this is the suitability test. And so what this says is we have five different factors in goal fourteen, public facilities, the rural urban edge, energy economics, environment and social impacts and soil priorities, and then compatibility with nearby agricultural uses. And what we need to do is, one of the things we, the petitioner said was we didn't have a way to equitably apply these factors to all of our analysis. And because we weren't applying it equitably, that we were creating value systems for the lands that we were looking at. So what we need to have is sort of a neutral application of science to all the study areas and then have that, that methodology bubble up those lands that were considered suitable. And so for that, we put together a screening criteria methodology that DJ will walk you through. But it was, it was, it's very complex and nuanced, but we tried to make it as neutral and scientific as possible. And then step three says you have to do the same thing. You apply those goal fourteen location factors to that priority sequence of lands. So those lands that came out of the exception land analysis that were considered adequate, we now look at them first for goal fourteen factors for suitability. And then after looking at them, if there's still land need left, so we didn't get, we didn't find enough land in exception lands, we then go to the next priority, which is class four soils and then class three soils and so on. So step one is establishing the land need. And this is established in appendix B of the plan. And the petitioners did not argue that the land need had not been established. And so for this MGMUP, what you see here is a table that shows the land need that came out of the housing needs analysis and the economic opportunities analysis. And then the buildables land inventory that was done in two thousand and one. And then the city amended it in two thousand and three, right before they submitted it to the state. So from that, we have a variety of different needs and we had a total of one thousand one hundred and twenty-eight acres. Now, we subtracted sixty acres from the parks right away because the, when we submitted in two thousand and three, DLCD remanded it back to us as there was an objection about how much park acreage was submitted and recommend that we revisit it in terms of park need. And it was determined to subtract sixty acres out of the park need because we have acreage outside the city serving a park need for Joe Dancer Park North. So city council already made that decision in two thousand and four. And then we did come to you in a work session a couple of months ago and said that we've had this other event happen, which is in two thousand and eight, a legal conservation easement was recorded against eighty-one acres of land that's currently within the existing city limits and city UGB. And that conservation says no development in perpetuity can happen on this property. At the time, we said, you know, we recommend we do a UGB land swap after this process. But as we were going through the process and finding ways to find efficiencies, we felt we really should bring this into this process. We felt comfortable doing that because we were able to find about forty acres of additional land use efficiencies. So the change wouldn't be significant. And so we added that eighty-one acres that has the conservation easement on it to the overall land need in terms of gross buildable acres. And so this is a map showing that conservation easement. And what we added was right here in red. We didn't touch anything that didn't have a legal instrument on it. So there's land up here that's very hard to get to, which typically wouldn't be considered buildable anymore. We decided to, in terms of the true sniff test, we were just going to look at the land that had these legal instruments that really created them as unbuildable at this, at this time. And so what that does is that shifts the numbers around a little bit. You see up here with housing and parks, and then our final number was one thousand one hundred and forty-nine acres. Now, in McMinnville, all these elements here are all in our residential zone. So a lot of communities have park zones and public facility zones and school zones. We have all of this in our residential zone. So eventually, it all just becomes what we call residential land need. And so through this process, we had a thousand forty-three acres of residential land need and a hundred and six acres of commercial land need. And then we had a surplus of forty-six acres of industrial land. So then we started looking at efficiencies within the city. And the original plan had a methodology to achieve efficiencies within the existing UGB. So how can we push density in the UGB so that we don't expand as much? And the original plan had a methodology and assumption that they could, that they could deduct two hundred and twenty-five acres of housing land need by creating some density tools within the existing UGB. That was done back in two thousand and three with the submittal. And so what we've done as staff is we've gone back and we've tested all of that to see if that was actually achieved. Now, there are parts of it where it wasn't achieved, but other parts were overachieved. And so in the end, we are comfortable with maintaining that two hundred and twenty-five acres of land use efficiencies. And we have recorded everything in a technical memo called technical memo number eleven. It's attachment two to appendix C that walks through the analysis of the land use efficiencies and what was actually achieved. And so we deduct that from the overall total. And now we have a residential land need of eight hundred and eighteen acres and a hundred and six commercial acres and a total of nine hundred and twenty-four acres. And this is for both phase one and phase two. But as you know, we already brought some land in per phase one, which is two hundred and fifty-nine acres. So we're deducting that from the total to get to six hundred and sixty-five acres for phase two in terms of landing. So this is our final land need number for the phase two effort that we're working on and bringing to you. Heather, I just wanted to say for the record that Counselor Peralta has joined the meeting. So the next step is to determine the candidate lands. So the lands that we're going to study for adequacy and suitability. And we use the same methodology that was used in two thousand and three, which was we drew a one-mile buffer around the existing UGB to look at land within that one mile. And then we, we subtracted anything that wasn't considered billable. So by state law, flood hat, flood plains are not buildable, especially, especially in McMinnville because we have a zone that does not allow us to build in the flood plains. So we subtracted that. By state law, we can also subtract slopes that are greater than twenty-five percent in terms of how steep they are. And we walked you through this in a previous work session, but they're all over here in this western edge. So we deducted those as well. And then anything that's committed land. So for instance, up here is land that the city owns for the wastewater treatment plant expansion. And then there's also a couple of developed cemeteries in here. So we deducted those as well. And then we took that one-mile study area buffer and we looked at what the soil classes were in that because that's the determining factor in terms of how we go through the analysis. And the red is class one. That's the last soil we want to look at. Orange is class two, yellow is class three and green is class four through eight. And so you can see most of McMinnville is surrounded by class two soils. And so we started drawing study areas. We want to draw, you, you're looking for adjacency to the existing UGB. And so we were looking at adjacency and then we were trying to pick up where we found clusters of lower class soils. So class three soils here and over in this area, we migrated out a little bit because there's this big cluster of class three soils in this area and just really started drawing the study areas in that regard. And this was our final preliminary study area for the whole project. So now I'm going to turn it over to DJ. He's going to walk you through how we analyzed each study area and came up with our recommendation for you.
Thanks, Heather. So my job is to go through this, this little dance that occurs between determining adequacy of, of land, of the study areas to meet identified land needs and then following up with, on that after we've determined if there's adequacy to determine suitability. And both of these, in step two and step three, both factors weighed very importantly in the recommendation that we have. So next slide. We started out by evaluating every study area that you saw on the, on the map against nineteen screening criteria. So there's, there's factors and the factors come from goal fourteen. These are the location factors. Factor three is public facilities and efficiency and, and in delivery of public facilities. Factor four is efficiency of land uses at the edge. And there's four fat, four criteria that we use to evaluate factor four. Urban integration, commercial suitability, housing suitability and development capacity. Factor five, there are five criteria. Distance to services, which relates to an energy element of factor five. Remember that factor five is energy, environment. five. Remember that factor five is energy, environment, social consequences, and economy, economics, economy. Distance to services relates to energy. Parks, schools, and other public amenities being suitable in a study area, that relates to the social consequences of that area urbanizing. Social equity and justice relates to whether or not affordable housing can be built in that area. That's an equity and social justice, again, another social consequence. Hazard risks and natural resources, obviously, those relate to the environment. And then factor six is soil priority. That's pretty much built into the prioritization process. But I want to point out, we also looked at high-value farmland. They are defined differently in two different statutes. What's interesting about high-value farmland is that it really was helpful in determining how the effect of urbanization might impact areas adjacent to the UGB. If, however, just parent, just as an aside, if high-value farmland had the same priority as soil priority did, the entire area around the UGB would be high value. But it does, it's not weighed the same, though. We used it somewhat differently. And then factor seven really is all about what's the effect of urbanization on nearby agricultural uses. For the going back to factor three, the wastewater, water, and transportation costs, all of that work was done by Jacobs engineers. They actually did the ratings. I did the cost. We did the cost rating, but they built in the costs and did the analysis. And then our staff rated the other the other criteria that you see. So next. We had one staff person do the ratings for all of the study areas for each criteria. So in order to maintain some consistency. And how that rating process worked was we took a criteria, hazard areas, for example, and we rated the area on a three-point scale with one being poor and three being good and two being somewhere in between. All of the criteria were applied and rated equally. We didn't use any multipliers to add emphasis to any of them. And most of the criteria relied on quantifiable metrics, and then they were sorted at obvious breakpoints to determine what the point score for an area would be. So we were, we did this for all of the study areas for all and applied all of the criteria to all of them. So the next slide shows you an example of how this would have been applied to the hazard risk. This is part of factor five, and every study area got a score. I'm going to draw your attention to Norton Lane West, which is about the fifth one down. It it didn't rate very well. It has seventy-one percent of the area is unbuildable. So that gave it a rating of one. If it had only, say, ten percent, it would have gotten a three score there. And then it also, it it was pretty good for landslide risk. It didn't have much liquefaction risk. And so we added all of those up and divided them, and that that gave it its score. Now, its total score is a two, so it's moderate. Just because an area got a one or a two or three for this individual criteria, didn't necessarily mean it would not be included in the recommendation, but it had an influence, okay, in the final recommendation. And that that factor in particular had influence in two ways because it's one of the goal factor five criteria that you see here in this rating sheets. We summed up all the ratings for all of those areas that you can see on the next slide. And so the here are the factor three criteria over on the right side for water feasibility and cost, sanitary sewer feasibility and cost, et cetera. And then, so there's the factor five ratings for each study area. The next slide shows the factors, excuse me, that's factor three. This slide shows the factor four and five ratings for each of the criteria. And then the last slide shows the criteria six and seven ratings for each criteria, I mean, for each study area. The the factor, factor five and factor seven are important because they're applied twice. They're applied to do to to determine the what is it, Heather?
Adequacy.
Adequacy, adequacy, thank you. Whether the area is adequate to meet identified urban land needs, and then on for and then they're applied again when we do the suitability analysis. So go ahead, next slide. And if anybody has questions as we're going along, please feel free to ask. So this step two process, determine adequacy, how did you use these? How did we use these factors? Here's what we did. As Heather noted, we set a threshold value of one point five points. And any study area who did so cruddy under either factor five or factor seven that they couldn't even average one point five points, they were determined inadequate to meet identified urban land needs. They just were were scored so poorly, either on the energy, environment, and social consequences, or the conflicts with adjacent agricultural uses, that they were pretty much discounted. One and a half was chosen in part because factor seven only has two criteria. And if we had set the threshold at one, almost everything would have failed. And if we set the factor at two, almost everything would have passed, and it would have rendered the use of that factor pretty unworkable in the context of the adequacy review. So we set the rating at one point five, and it worked quite well. Next. And then under step three, we look at the land, at the study areas that are deemed adequate to meet needs, and then we apply the goal, other goal fourteen factors: public facilities, adjacent to the urban area, et cetera. We go through that process. So we did this in priority order. So the green shaded areas are the exception areas, the yellow are next highest priority, class three and four class soils in those areas, and then the red are the lowest priority areas. Those are class one and two soils. So starting with the exception areas, we first looked at whether they were adequate to meet identified land needs. The ones that are circled here were deemed inadequate to meet land needs. And for a variety of reasons, mostly like in the in the northwest, the west, the Hidden Hills, it was because of factor five. In Brenton Lane in the center there, it was because of factor seven conflicts. It's surrounded by prime by prime farmland. And it was a mix in Bun's Village, but it's it's not, it fails mostly unrelated to factor five. The other areas were deemed adequate. So then we applied goal for the other goal fourteen criteria on the next slide to determine which ones we would recommend to be included. And you'll see there are three recommended to include, two that are not recommended to be included because under goal fourteen, we couldn't figure, they they just were were very difficult to to urbanize effectively. The West Side Road where that the arrow is now, it's very expensive to serve. It impacts a lot of farmland on the edges. It impacts a lot of wildlife habitat on the edges. The 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 door price for public facilities, just for sewer alone, was almost seventy thousand dollars a door to to bring sewer to that area. So it failed because of that. And then Lawson Lane down south failed because you can't annex it unless you include farmland that's around it. And there was no way to bring farmland in, as we will see. So those are the recommendations for these, the exception areas, three new ones. Riverside North as is is actually being designated for industrial use, but it's it would eventually, it would be meeting a commercial need through a swap, and I'll explain that in a little while. It's about thirty-six acres of commercial need that that's meeting through an efficiency exchange and and then residential for the balance. So the math shows that we've whittled down our identified need a little bit, and so not, but not enough to get to zero. So now we move to the next, the next priority area, which are the areas that are class four, class and class three soils. Here's the adequacy evaluation for them. Four of these areas are deemed inadequate to meet urban land needs. The area up north of Baker Creek is inadequate, in part because you can't get services there, but also because it has significant conflicts with natural resources, and a lot of it is in the flood plain. There were just a host of problems under goal five for that area. Fox Ridge Road, north of Fox Ridge Road and West Hills Two were both deemed inadequate under goal five. Neither of them can absorb much in the way of affordable house thing because of how steep the slopes are. Both of them have an extraordinary amount of critical wildlife habitat. Both of them have some, not so much in West Hills, but definitely in north of Fox Ridge, have some hazards, some significant landslide hazards. And so when you add them all up and score them, they were inadequate. And then the finally, the area down south, that that entire area is in a high liquefaction area. It is subject to severe, a severe damage in an earthquake. So building a school would have been out of the question, building commercial development, apartment buildings, all of those kinds of tall, heavy buildings would have been impossible there. And so it was deemed inadequate. Next slide shows the areas that were deemed adequate and how they rated. And we're including parts of all, either all or parts of them, because they they were able to do pretty well under the goal fourteen review, especially West Hills South, which is the one that's over on the left. It's mostly flat. It can absorb a lot of housing, and it's a high priority in the in the prioritization process. The area in the up to the north, the Rudin property, it was the lowest, it was the only part of the study area that it was part of that would be easy to serve with gravity sewers and didn't include class one soil. So that's why it was recommended. The area in the center there, Norton Lane West, it was recommended because it can provide a limited amount of industrial land to offset the commercial rezone that I'll show you in just a minute. And then finally, over by the museum, that area was recommended to be coming as commercial land, to meet part of our commercial land need. The area to the east that is circled as better as poorer quality soils in the area, the portion of that study there to the west, it was left out. So again, after we've got this recommendation, we need to do a little math. Oh, okay, never mind, I'm going to commercial. I'll come back to that. On the commercial land need, there are two types of commercial land need that we evaluated for. One was in residential areas, the ability for those areas to include neighborhood commercial uses. And then the other was for other commercial uses. And we addressed that through a combination of rezoning resource lands in a couple of places like near the museum. But the most of it is by rezoning industrial land as an efficiency measure near Three Mile, Three Mile Lane. And what this allowed us to do, the next slide shows you the area that would be rezoned. That's about just shy of forty acres. That has a benefit to the Three Mile Lane area of incurring a lot of the absorbing a lot of the costs associated with serving that area, the interchange, as well as water and sewer, which has held back this area from held this area back from developing the as industrial land because the industrial land can't absorb all of those costs. So the hope is that if commercial development occurs up close to Highway eighteen, then that will provide some support for the industrial development below it. The plan, if you'll recall, had a forty-six acre surplus of industrial land. We wanted to maintain that. And so the exchange here was to find other land that we could use to backfill this industrial inventory. And that backfill occurred through Norton, through Riverside North, which was thirty-six acres, and then four acres, about four acres in Norton Lane West. Okay, so here we are back at our table, and we've we do a little bit of math under this second priority of how much inventory this these areas can provide. And we're still left with remaining need. However, this remaining need is largely going to be addressed by the inclusion of these study areas that must come into the urban growth boundary in order to extend sewer service to West Hills South. This is allowed by statute under ORS one ninety-seven, two ninety-eight, three C, that says land of lower priority can be included if it is needed to accommodate land of higher priority. So here's why, to demonstrate the need for these three areas to come in to provide sewer is shown on the next slide. This rather colorful, I'm so proud of the engineers for getting creative with their selection of colors here. But the pink areas in this slide are areas that can be served with short extensions of gravity sewers. And as you can see, everything kind of hinges on Southwest oh six and Southwest two and west of Old Sheridan Road, because all of those sewers provide are conduits to reach West Hills South. You can't sewer West Hills South unless you bring these other study areas in. And the creeks there provide graphic evidence of the direction that that the water is flowing and why you have to extend gravity sewers going from southeast up towards the northwest. There are some short extensions that can occur into Southwest Two, but the majority of this area all has to be served by extending gravity sewers down through these three areas. So that it not only reaches the West Hill South high priority area, but some high priority soils in west of Old Sheridan Road. So when we go back to our math table, as you can see in the center column of this table, there's a lot of buildable acres in those areas, and it has, they're mostly flat, and they have a lot of capacity for residential and neighborhood commercial uses. So once you apply, once you include those areas in the boundary and look at the capacity and look at the acreages involved and the land and the and the land uses that they're able to support, we essentially meet our need at that point, which is why we were not able to go back to and take another look at Three Mile Lane, which I know that may disappoint some of you, but we just ran out of real estate by the time we got here. So that I did want to show you a couple of other things about other areas, particularly with respect to how to sewer solutions for them. I think the next slide shows some of that. But this is what the UGB boundary recommendation looks like. This is, go ahead, Heather. This slide shows the the acreages involved for gross buildable and gross total acreage in phase two. And it all it meets all of the needs that we have. And the areas that are being recommended for inclusion include three. A couple of study areas were for efficiencies reasons, we we split them to avoid class one soils or better soils. We also in west of Old Sheridan Road to that westernmost southwest area, we stopped at Cosine Creek and split that area and only included the areas north of Cosine Creek. It met our need at that point, and it avoided some rather It met our need at that point and it avoided some rather difficult sewer fixes to serve the area south of there. And then we included three exception areas and all of the other, the resource land in the three study areas that are listed at the bottom. So that's the recommendation. Just briefly, we didn't need at this point, since we'd met our need, to look at any of the other class two soil, class one and class two soil areas. I wanted to look to show you Three Mile Lane. It's a much more expensive area to provide sewer service to. It's shaded purple here. It was the one of the more most difficult areas and it's indicated as purple in the sewer concept map. The pink line that you see there is a pressure sewer that runs under Highway eighteen and under the river and into the city. It's put that sewer sewage is pushed by a pump station that would be located right there at the ditch and all the sewage drains to that and then it gets pumped into the city. Very expensive and unless you get a lot of real estate to absorb those costs, the cost the this this is an expensive area to serve. The other one that I wanted to briefly show you is for, we didn't examine class one soils. And this is this next, that's up in the northwest. This next map shows how difficult that area is to provide sewers with. In in fact, you can see Fox Ridge Road area, most of it drains towards the north. And where it would be collected in a very long gravity sewer pipe that will go then to a big pump station in northwest E X one A right there. And then it gets then after it gets into that pump station is pumped up into the city, into the gravity sewer system. And that system has capacity constraints and it goes through two more pump stations. So it's just from an energy standpoint and from an operational standpoint, it's a difficult area to serve. That's not with not notwithstanding those constraints, it's not like the areas that were recommended for inclusion are easy. They are gravity sewers, but there are downstream capacity issues that those areas face and all of these sanitary sewer solutions are involve expensive fixes.
That will take time to develop.
And it'll take some time to develop, yeah, master planning and updates to public facility plans.
So that's that's how we determined the study areas to recommend to you. And truly, we we if you, you know, follow that, it's it's it is all based on the science and not actually any sort of value system of where we want to select lands. So based on that, we then started talking about what's the best implementation methodology. So just like D J said, that, you know, this type of planning is it's long range planning. We're probably looking at five to ten years in terms of getting these lands to a place where they can actually annex into the city and develop. And there's still a lot more planning to do after the U G B is approved, the U G B is approved. And so what we wanted to do is make sure we put the implementation methodology together so that we were all on the same page as to how we walk through that process. So we talked you through appendix A, B, and C, and now we're going to talk about appendix D, E, F, and G, which is the implementation methodology. So if you see here, this is the phase one and phase two U G B amendment in the end. If the phase two moves forward and the different types of lands associated with them, we have a lot of exception areas in here. We have these three exception areas that came in in two thousand and four that have still not sixteen years later moved at all. We have eight hundred and eighteen acres of residential land that has all this stuff included in it. And we want to make sure that we are identifying where all this stuff goes. We we said that we were doing a land need analysis and that we were doing building acreage based on those needs. And so the petitioner said in the court petition, how are you going to assure us that you're actually meeting your need in terms of because it's all under this residential comp plan designation because we only have one and it all goes into residential. So our recommendation, and we've talked to you about this before, is a framework plan. A framework plan is sort of the big idea plan and it's a guiding document. And so we wrote a new appendix for this framework plan to sort of walk, identify what the need is and where we feel the big idea in terms of where it should go and how how these areas, when we're going through the analysis, would meet that need. So it's still based on that smart smart growth planning principle, which is principle number six, I believe, of the seven principles for the plan of these neighborhood activity centers. And the neighborhood activity centers are still in this plan. They're just not determination for need, which is what the petitioner said. But but afterwards, we want to make sure that we're building these because they they're a way to bring all these different needs together in a smart growth urban planning effort. So we've identified two neighborhood activity center opportunities here and here based on transportation corridors and how the land is top topography of the land. And so these would be neighborhood serving commercial with high density residential adjacent to it, and then the residential sort of migrates out into mixed middle housing residential beyond it. And then we also identify where we feel there's opportunities for greenway trails up here along the ridge line. This is where you see a lot of those tree stands where you have the aviation species up here, a great opportunity to protect those and do these greenways. There's a Cosine Creek opportunity here in terms of protecting the riparian area and also providing an opportunity for the public to enjoy that and appreciate it in terms of a greenway. So we started putting all that together. We also wanted to make sure, though, these other exception areas that have been in the U G B for sixteen years and haven't developed, we were like, we we said, how do we start incentivizing these to be redeveloped? And thought that we really need to bring this into the framework planning process too so that we could show how they interact with the city in terms of urbanization, especially up here with Fox Ridge Road because it will be interacting with new land as well as the future high school site. So the framework plan is the big picture idea. And then our recommendation is that the city do area planning for different areas of this framework plan prior to any land coming into the city for annexation. So it's in the U G B. As a community, we go through a community effort and do an area plan and we start deciding where we want to see parks go and where we want to see the different types of residential development go. The city adopts the area plan, so then then it's an adopted document. And then when a property owner wants to bring a piece of property into the city for annexation, they need to master, show a master plan, a conceptual master plan that says, this is, so let's pretend it's this property. This is how my property here is going to meet your area plan. I'm going to do high density over here. I'm going to do missing middle housing here. If there's a trail that goes through it, I'm going to provide that. So they have to show how they're meeting that community vision for the area to come in for annexation, and that's any property over ten acres. The area plans with the way we've written that up is the area plans are a hundred acres or more. It's recommended that the city initiate and do them, but there's an opportunity for property owners to do them if they can get if they're interested in moving quicker than the city's moving to be able to put those together. And this sort of walks through what that whole process is. So the city initiates the framework plan. That's the big picture. City then initiates the area plan, which is probably the fifteen thousand foot level, and we work with property owners to do that. Or the property owners can do it themselves with the city involved. The city, the property owners then develop their concept master plan when they want to annex into the city. That comes to city council as part of an annexation agreement, so it's not a land use decision yet. However, one of the parameters of the annexation agreement is that they have to have their master plan adopted as a land use decision within a year so that they're held to that. And so they go through a master plan process as a land use decision with public with a public hearing process that then eventually gets up to city council as a quasi judicial land use process. If their property is less than ten acres, they don't have to do the master plan, but they have to show how they're meeting the area plan because presumably it's a much smaller piece of property that probably only has one or two elements on it. We are recommending the order in which the area planning take place. I'm actually, after talking with some, thinking about this piece a little bit, we might switch up Fox Ridge Road and southwest area because, as we just shared with you, the the sewer system to come up and serve all of this is a fairly complex project and needs to be designed and and put into a master plan. So this would be much easier to move sooner rather than later. And so we might recommend for you coming December first with the public hearing that 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 one go first. But these are, this is the order in which we see the the area planning should take place. We are recommending an area plan for Riverside South because we feel like we need to do something to start encouraging redevelopment here to meet city housing need. There's intended to be five hundred and fifty new housing units out here. And if we can put together some sort of vision with the property owners, it might incentivize that.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
Do you mind taking me on the last slide? Thanks. So so far, what's the communication with property owners in these specific areas that are highlighted? And is there any concern that things might not progress as planned, similar to the way that things have not progressed?
Over here.
Side South as intended.
Well, here's the interesting piece about the Oregon land use system. There is no interest in whether or not the property owner wants to come into the city and redevelop. We haven't had any conversations with property owners. We noticed them, we in fact, the notice just went out today to let them know that they're being considered for the U G B amendment. But the whole selection of land is based on that process we just described to you. So it's not, it's not willing and unwilling property owner. It's really a science of land soils based on soils that are best for farming and protect protecting forest land and then walking through that process. So we haven't had those discussions. The hope is that there are some out there that are interested in redeveloping and coming into the city over time because it will be incremental as it does these things migrate through. And again, this area down here, because of the sewer, the infrastructure systems that need to be designed and planned, this is a ways out, several years out. The Rudins, we know, are interested. They're building out their last phase of their subdivision. They own this property right here. We know they're interested in coming in fairly soon. They came to us and let it share that with us. And theirs was an obvious piece of land. We all recognize that that would probably come into the U G B anyways because they're surrounded by the U G B right now. But they're the only ones that we have talked to. I suspect after the letters go out today, we'll start getting phone calls.
Okay, so so I, this is a largely hypothetical question, so if it's unanswerable, I'm sorry for asking an unanswerable question, but so we're going through this process right now and the desire component i- is not part of criteria, right? Which makes perfect sense, but because that property could change hands on any of those pieces of property could change hands on a whim. But so what if, what if the result is that we see no development and it's now ten years, fifteen, twenty years in the future? I know it's kind of a really big picture question, but really like, I mean, there there is that. I mean, typically, in my experience in McMinnville, when it's in or near town, my experience in McMinnville is almost my entire life, if people don't want to create density. So so what happens just kind of kind of logically if we if we go through this and then there is no development and now here we are down the road, two decades, we've done all this planning and only very few people have developed and we still find ourselves in this similar position?
Yeah, so that's kind of the catch twenty-two, the Oregon land use system that everyone's trying to figure out right now. So, you know, if you think about it, the first level of lands we look at, the exception areas, are the hardest lands to redevelop. So we look at them first and say, oh, these will redevelop for urban uses, but honestly, they're one and two acre parcels. People love living there. They like the elbow room. They pay two thirds the taxes because they're not paying the city levy rate. And they're right next to all the amenities everyone else enjoys. And so it's it's very difficult to get these exception lands redeveloped. And now that we're thirty, forty, fifty, fifty years into the Oregon land use system, there are some cities that are that are carrying what we call these, we call it false inventory of buildable land where we're, you know, we're still saying that it's going to accept redevelopment and new housing can happen there, but it's just not happening. And so the city's need is not being met. And that's, that is a dialogue that's occurring in the land use system. When recently, in the last couple of years, there were some amendments to the state statutes that allowed cities to look at exception lands differently. So if we were doing a new U G B project right now, we could look at these exception lands based on the fact that they've been here for sixteen years and haven't moved one inch into the city and redeveloped and yielded one new housing unit for the city's housing need. We can look at it and assign a different capacity level to it. It's still considered to have capacity for the city in terms of new housing units, but it's looked at differently. So if none of this develops in the next ten to fifteen years, the city would probably go through another U G B effort and re and and assign different capacity levels to this. We're saying that all this land in yellow is going to yield twenty-five hundred homes.
I just want to make sure I understand, so forgive me as I retract, but so what you're saying is that because we're going through this process based on our last attempt at U G B expansion, we can't really consider the exception lands any differently. However, if this was a new process, and and that's just a clarifying point, if this was a new process, we could consider those differently because what we know, what we've learned is that the likelihood of these areas developing is is very small. But we're going through, but the process that we're going through, we're including those areas because we're we're including them based on this criteria that we're legally bound to, even though we know better.
Well, most, so mostly the land that you're talking about is already in the U G B.
Yeah.
So this all happened in two thousand and four. And really, the worst one is this right here, Fox Ridge Road. This, looking at this and doing the analysis for this area, this is going to be really tough to redevelop. I don't see that happening for a long time. This is just property owner willingness over here, but that's already in the U G B. And so that that's the balancing act that the city council made back in January, which is, do we pursue a new U G B amendment and face face the prospect of being challenged at each decision making milestone? So if you think about it, this project has been challenged since nineteen ninety-four at each decision making milestone. If you look at the record of up and down and up and down and up and down the chain and the objections, it's it's everything. It's population forecast, it's housing needs analysis and the assumptions that went into that, it's economic opportunity analysis and the assumptions that went into that, it's the buildable land inventory and the assumptions that went into that, it's the land use efficiencies and assumptions that went into that. I mean, it's a laundry list of them and we're down to one left, which is the alternatives analysis. So the city made the decision of, we're going to carry this false inventory, it's already in the U G B, and we're going to pretend it's going to take some housing, we know it's not, not in the near term, to see if we can get some land in the near term into the U G B that can be redeveloped. But I'm telling you, it's not going to happen overnight. There's a lot of people who are saying, you have all this housing taking place up here, why do we need this? U G B amendments do not deliver housing product to a community for years because there's still so much work to do for that land to get entitled. So that's that's why it's long range planning.
Well, Heather, and we look at the South Baker Creek and North Baker Creek, thirty years ago, that was, that was available and it took thirty years to get to a point and it's going very quickly now. But back to Remy's point of not wanting to see density happening, we've had those discussions as we've looked at Baker Creek South and Baker Creek North. People just don't feel comfortable with that kind of density and that that's taken over thirty years.
Yeah, so I I don't, I don't think the housing affordability issue is going to be resolved anytime soon in terms of the next couple of years, except for those singular projects that we work really hard to bring to, you know, to the ground, which is like the Housing Authority one, which still has to be competitive for funds with Portland Metro area. I don't think it's going to happen. I mean, we're still going to be on this trend of exponential housing prices and affordability. I mean, we're still going to be on this trend of exponential housing prices and affordability getting more and more out of reach because our housing supply is not going to be resolved anytime soon. But we gotta start sometime because whenever we start, it's going to be pushed out. So the, the balancing act was, let's get moving and do, build on the investment that's already occurred. Build on the fact that all those challenges that occurred over fourteen years have been resolved and we're down to one. And try to get this through so that we can get some land moving. And then work on an urban reserve area, which would be the next step. Or if none of this land develops and we come in in fifteen years and we say, we're going to put less capacity to these, the state law will now let us do that. Um, and we still need land, we would go into the urban reserve area to get land for the next U G B amendment. And it's a lot less work once you have that urban reserve area established.
Heather, if I might, the other, um, the other benefit to this proposal is that you don't have thirty to forty different property owners or spread out over, over thir- over thirty or forty acres. Uh, you've got one property owner um who is in uh in, who is running a, a, a business operation within, and that property owner has an opportunity to convert their land uh to urban uses and um e- economically do very well. And so I just think that the incentives are completely different for these areas in the southwest than they are in the exception areas.
Yeah, so you're talking about the farm tracks down there.
Yes.
Yeah, so if you don't mind, I'll, I want to make sure we get through the other stuff before we hit the seven o'clock hour. Um, just because we're trying to familiarize you with the documents that are in front of you um for the public hearing process. So the appendix D also describes what's the summary of land needs and goes through how much we uh have committed to having this high-density residential zoning, how much we've committed to having parks and what types of parks. It's very specific about the types of parks and how much acreage for each type of park and for schools and then remaining housing with the targeted uh five point seven dwelling units breaker. So when we go into area planning, we're going to start assigning all these needs into the different areas. Appendix F is the comprehensive plan map. So to be able to do the framework planning and the area planning, we have, we have basically have four comprehensive plan designations in McMinnville. A commercial one, an industrial one, floodplain and residential. And a lot of communities have like four residential comp plan designations. Low density, medium density, high density, very high. Um, it works well here in McMinnville because we have been working on this sort of like planned development mixed housing product in neighborhoods, which is a good thing. But we don't want to apply just the residential plan designation across here because there's so many other needs that we're trying to meet in here. So that's why we're recommending a new comprehensive plan designation called the Urban Holding Comprehensive Plan Designation. And that's for land that needs to have an area plan done before it annexes into the city and redevelops. Um, and that way we can make sure we're achieving all those needs. In terms of the zoning ordinance, we are recommending three new sections to chapter seventeen, that's the zoning ordinance. We're re- we're recommending um a new section on area master planning so that we make sure that that's part of the land use process. We're recommending um a new zone, the high-density residential zone. And this is what's in the original plan and so it remains as is, as originally recommended in that plan. And then we're recommending a neighborhood activity center overlay zone that would be applied to the neighborhood activity centers in the area plan. And that's, that's the same as it was in the original plan as well. We've tried to keep us true to the original plans possible for these things. Appendix D is the comprehensive plan policy amendments. Um, the comprehensive plan is divided, oh, sorry, but that slide doesn't look very good. The comprehensive plan is divided into three different um pieces, goals, policies and proposals. Proposals are uh work that the city's committing to do in the future for its, for achieving its comprehensive plan. So you will see that we in that appendix D are recommending a variety of new policies and proposals. And I just want to highlight some of them for you. We maintain the ones that were originally in there. Several of them were adopted in two thousand and four and already sit in the comprehensive plan and we've been using them, especially that ones for housing. We are recommending two new proposals for natural resources. And this is based on a conversation we had with you at a work session where we went through the hazards surrounding the city. And so we're recommending developing, adopting and maintaining a natural hazards inventory, so identifying where they are. And then creating an overlay zone that would um mitigate the effects of those natural hazards on people and property as developed. We're recommending for the housing chapter to delete the West Side density policy. That's a policy that was in place because of capacity issues in the, in the wastewater system, infrastructure system that no longer exists. And um, and it's really sort of kept the density low on the west side. And we, we want to remove that because one of our principles is to encourage higher density. Um, and then we have, we're adding policies for the high-density residential zone. And then in terms of a proposal for housing, we're recommending a proposal of looking at the locational policies that are in the comp plan. So we have locational policies that say low residential housing will be located here, medium here, high here. And it sort of creates a segregated um system within the community of where low, medium, high residential density is occurring. And we've recently with the Great Neighborhood Principles have gone to a system of inclusion where we're trying to get mixed-use neighborhoods in terms of different types of housing products. And so we're recommending that we look at those locational policies, policies to make sure they're not segregating housing that way. Um, in terms of facilities and services, we're updating the policies to say that every, that the facility plan should be um evaluated to be updated every five years if possible. That's a resource issue. And following any major U G B amendment. And that's for sanitary water in parks and for water, we have language in there that says we would encourage Mac Water and Light to do that. For urbanization, this is how we urbanize and expand. Uh, there's a lot more because this is our effort. We're adding all the principles that we um shared with you at the beginning of this presentation as policies. We're adding principles for urbanization decisions, so how to go through a decision-making process for, for U G B amendments. Um, we're adding a policy about coordinating master plans with U G B amendments. So what that means is, if this U G B amendment goes forward and is approved, we then are recommending that we come in right behind it and update all our master plans so we can ensure like parks and rec is being achieved in this new land area, that the wastewater master plan's being um up uh amended and updated to serve these lands, that type of thing. Um, we're recommending the new U H comprehensive plan designation and then framework plans, area plans and master plans and the neighborhood activity centers. And then there's several proposals under urbanization. And these are things that we've heard, we saw both in the petitioners, um petition to the court and also we've heard in the community over the last couple of years. So one proposal is this commitment to area planning and the types of, and the um areas that we described to you. Another proposal is to establish a park zone. So if we have such um extensive park land need, how do we make sure and ensure that that land is put, set aside for public parks? And so setting up a park zone would do that. Developing an open space and natural resources comp plan designation and zone map designation would help us protect that conservation easement um up at Segwin Farms. Um, doing the forty-acre rezone and comp plan uh designation change for the industrial land to commercial land is also a proposal for Highway eighteen. And that's currently um being reviewed right now under the three-mile lane area planning process. They're updating the transportation model and looking at a T P R analysis for that land. Um, and then doing an airport facility zone. So right now, all of our airport land is sort of encumbered in this industrial zone. Um, and many communities with airports like ours that have surrounding airport FAA land have airport facility zones that protect that land for, for the airport and also leverage it for economic development based on airport-specific activities.
Excuse me, why do you say it's encumbered in industrial land? What, what, I don't quite understand.
The whole airport is our, is um an M two zone, heavy industrial zone.
Uh, so the idea then is that we're limiting the types of businesses that could rent hangars essentially?
Uh, not necessarily because we don't um, the, we have, we have, the hangars are specific to the airport and we do see airport activities in that zone. But if, if there was opportunities for the land outside the security fence um to be leveraged more effectively for economic development activities, but they don't meet the criteria of the airport zone or, or the M two zone, so one is office space, um, then we can't locate it there.
So an airport zone is a much broader zoning?
Yes, I would say it's, it's not as Euclidean, meaning heavy industrial, light industrial. It's really looking at those activities that make the most sense around an airport, both for operations of the airport and then also for how the community leverages the airport for economic development.
Thank you, and I did take art, beauty and truth, which was a, a philosophy course. So I got the Euclidean, but I also appreciate you defining it for me. It was a difficult course. It was my sophomore year and it was a three hundred level course and it really challenged me. It was course three seventy-six.
Euclidean zoning is challenging for everyone. Um, so the last thing we wanted to share was sort of the urban rural impact. Is that so important for this community and the surrounding um, you know, the county uh in terms of expansions and where a lot of the conflict has been? So we wanted to talk a little bit about how we, what we've done is tried really hard to make this as compact as possible and still meet the city's needs. So you look at efficiencies and this gets to your question, Councilor Drapkin. Um, efficiencies is really like how much, how you can use the land most efficiently for urban uses. Well, exception areas are not as efficient as resource areas and that's what DJ was getting to. And so we did some counts for that in terms of the, it's what's considered buildable and unbuildable. And our exception area is forty-six percent of it's unbuildable. So most of our gross acre that is unbuildable in this overall U G B amendment is sitting in the exception areas. And then the resources are, areas are only twenty-three percent. And that's where DJ was talking about how you can really do a lot of density and compact urban development there. But the land use laws are taught, are set up so that we look at exception areas first in terms of where we urbanize. So we wanted to share um what that looks like for this U G B amendment. And this is for phase one and phase two, so the total amendment for this plan. And forty-four percent of the land area is exception areas. Um, and then only twenty-eight percent is class two soils. And if you saw that first soil map, you saw how much class two soil is around McMinnville. So we really were able to avoid that as much as possible. And the class two soils is only the class two soils really that we're bringing in to serve the class three soils. The um, and some other interesting statistics is uh this, this U G B amendment. So then it's a total of nine hundred and twenty-one acres, gross buildable acres and a total of twelve, one thousand two hundred and eighty gross acres. Uh, the, this U G B amendment accounts for two tenths of one percent of Yamhill County's acreage. So that's, that's how impactful that is. Um, and then the, in terms of E F U land that will be absorbed or urbanized with this plan, it's four tenths of one percent of Yamhill County's E F U land. So it's really trying to nestle into what the intent of the Oregon land use system is trying to achieve, which is protecting farmland and still allowing cities to grow and expand. We are in our public information process right now. We've done the service clubs tomorrow. Um, we're going to do our first public information session. When I set that up, I wasn't thinking about Veterans Day. So Claudia and I both get to work on Veterans Day tomorrow night. Um, but uh, we're going to, we're trying to set it up where we have different times and different days of the week to do the public information sessions. And then we do have you set up for public hearing December one, two and three. And then Yamhill County Board of Commissioners have noticed their public hearing for December tenth. We hope to deliver binders to you, like I said, with hard copies of the plan and the appendices next week. We're still working on the findings, so we'll be delivering those to you probably shortly after Thanksgiving, but a week prior to the, to the public hearing. But you can familiarize yourself with the, with the plan itself and the appendices uh over the two-week period. And then we have all this on our website at W W W dot growingmcminnvillemindfully dot com. And that leaves five minutes for questions, so I apologize.
So let's um, let's open it up for counsel. Any questions of Heather? Lots of good information. Again, your slides are very helpful uh for us taking uh notes, Heather. Any questions for Heather at this point?
Go ahead.
I don't have any questions. I, I just really appreciated the presentation, Heather. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sal. Zach, I saw you raise your hand.
Uh, thanks. I'll jump right into the questions. Um, the sort of scatter shot, but I'll try and get the ones I can. And the policy recommendations you had in there as part of in the appendices. If we approve ordinance five oh nine eight, will those go through? That, those will be included in the passage of ordinance fifteen ninety-eight?
Yeah, so the comprehensive plan policies with the zoning ordinance would not. We would bring those through, through a, a process.
That's sort of a approval of a work plan?
Uh huh.
At work, okay. Um, so that gets that, the other question was if we, if that was included, I'd like to see those before those were included, but they don't exist yet. Those are just a work plan of your intention.
Although they exist, we, we wrote them out. So if you look at appendix E, it's got all the language that would be in an ordinance for that zoning ordinance amendment.
Uh, uh, so propose three new sections to chapter seventeen, seventeen ten, area and master planning process, seventeen twenty-two, those? That's what you're talking about?
Yeah, they're all in there.
But I'm guessing that under seventeen ten area and master planning process, there would be a whole bunch of other text that ha- dictated how to area plan and master planning process and what?
Yeah, and that's all in appendix E.
Oh, okay, so not in the slideshow, but if I go to appendix E of what you get, are going to give me that's in there?
Yeah, yeah, so you're, we're, right now the documents online equate to about six hundred pages of documents.
Oh, a light read, excellent, um.
And so we've filled everything out, all policies, all
Okay, great. Um, uh
Why she sent it to the ten-page plan? Was this, it was the shortened, it was the like
That's the executive summary.
The executive summary.
Can't wait till I'm an executive. Um, the uh, do you have a sense or is there a way to measure how, as you guessed, I think DJ had brought up the farmland areas in the south there um are sort of large chunks of land? Do you have a way of quantifying or a map to see those, those lands?
Yeah, so appendix F, which is our comp plan map appendix, has both the maps and then we have a data spreadsheet of the tax lots associated with that amendment.
Okay, of, of the, the actual land plots and who, who and how owned, they're owned in like S W two, uh, W H five, those areas?
Yes, I don't know if they're, I don't know if the um, and I don't know if one of my team members knows this, if the, if the spreadsheet has it uh relative to the different study areas. But if that's helpful to you, counselor, we can definitely do that. We're, we're going to spend uh the next couple of days refining these documents based on what we're hearing to make them easier to read. Um, we're not going to change any substance to them, but if that's a helpful piece, we can put that together.
Uh, it'd be helpful for me.
Okay.
I would enjoy seeing that, yeah, and, and sort of the land sizes and the land chunks.
Okay.
See how that's going to get bid off and developed. Um.
Some of the uh, the maps have the tax lots shown over, uh overlaid on those areas.
Okay, cool. So when we're able to pull them up and zoom in on, we should be able to see a little bit there.
Yeah, most of the, there's about, between all of the new phase two areas, there's about seventy tax lots and the majority of those are in those exception areas. So the, the resource areas um are only, you know, a couple of tax lots each.
Okay, um, those were my more important questions. I'll defer the last minute to my fellow counselors.
Okay, any other questions for Heather or her team? I know there's a lot more to be coming as we are able to get to the documents and preparing ourselves and then the public hearing. Um, Heather, as always, and your team, thank you for taking very um technical uh information and getting it down to a point where at least we understand. We still have a lot of studying and a lot that we need to do. But um, again, it gives us the ability to understand where we're going and why we're going and where we've been. Zach?
One, just a last quick, quick one, a clarification. Those November eleven, thirteen, seventeen and twenty-three public information sessions, are we, are we not allowed to attend those specifically?
Being recommended that you not attend those.
Okay.
Um, and, and that they are, and we're, we're advertising them as informal sessions where people can ask questions that they need to ask, to get the information that they want to have. It's not a formal public hearing process that's creating standing. It's really so that people can get informed and decide they want to participate in the public hearing process in front of you. Um, the other thing I would say is, as you go through the documents, if you have questions Um, the other thing I would say is as you go through the documents, if you have questions, feel free to email them to us. So what we're going to do, like we've done with other land use processes, if we get questions from you, we'll aggregate them and send out a memo to all of you with the answers for those. Um, we'll also be providing the binders to you with a staff report that tries to give you this sort of high-level discussion of, of what we've gone through as well. And then as we get public testimony in, because we're going to accept public testimony, written public testimony, um, starting now, because we sent out the notices, um, we will be providing that to you as well. So after we deliver the binders, as we get testimony in that day, we'll send them out at five o'clock, much like we've done with other land use processes to you.
Excellent, and I'm just going to keep driving over the edge until someone pulls me off. Um, I, real quick, I, there was a handful of like sort of infrastructure, both planning and real infrastructure, things that I was hoping to ask about, but, and I was checking them off as you were clipping through them pretty quickly. One thing I didn't notice, that anything to the, any updates or, or planned updates to the TSP as part of this growth?
No, that, that is part of it. So in those comp plan policies where I talked about updating the master plans, that's one of them. So after, if this UGB amendment's approved, our recommendation is we update the parks and rec master plan. We update the transportation system plan, the wastewater one, the, the water one. Um, and even utilities, if Mack Water and Light wants to do that.
So the answer to all my questions was read the darn packet, you bonehead.
Yeah.
Say that, Zach.
Thanks.
Okay, it is, uh, it's a two after eight. Thank you again, Heather. Um, I think if we may just take two, three minutes to stand up, we've been sitting for an hour and a half. So, uh, we will, we will start at eight oh five. So just to give a, uh, members of the council just a stretch and, uh, go ahead, Claudia.
Seven oh five.
Uh, excuse me, I'm in Arizona, so it's eight oh five my time, okay? Seven oh five, exactly. Okay, uh, three minutes, we'll be, uh, starting up at seven oh five. Thanks, everyone.
Same Zoom?